...to order, ask everybody present to rise, join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the portion of our meeting reserved for public comments. If there's anyone in the crowd today that would like to address the board publicly, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, the consent agenda. There's two items, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any questions, additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then it passes. So we have lots on the agendas, we'll start with Mr. Nelson Superintendent's report.
So the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has proclaimed that this week is Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas Wisconsin's adult school crossing guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school, and whereas adult school crossing guards typically serve with a dedication that discounts the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts and heavy traffic, and whereas for more than five decades, adult school crossing guards have served communities across Wisconsin, and that services help to drive down the rates of young pedestrian deaths and injuries despite increases in traffic volume, and whereas adult school crossing guards add to the effectiveness of the student safety patrol members with whom they often serve and whose activity they help direct, and whereas adult school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of the young people they assist the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior. Therefore be it resolved that January 22 through 26, 2018, be declared Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week in the state of Wisconsin." So, we do thank all of our crossing guards for keeping our kids safe and their hard work that they do and some bitter temperatures helping our kids stay safe. We want to make sure that you thank your crossing guards if you walk to school or when you're driving by wave at them and be friendly to them. They provide a great service for us and we want to appreciate them. So, and then also, the next two items, Mr. Mantai was not able to be here tonight, he was going to present for these. So I apologize that a couple of these students, I may not have their name exactly accurate. He had a recent surgery and so wasn't able to be here tonight, he's fine, but he was exhausted coming back to work. So we have a newly chartered National Business Honor Society that's just been started at Grafton High School, and there are students that are going to be inducted on Wednesday, January 31st from 6:00 to 6:30. They're doing an induction ceremony in the upper part of the auditorium. But we want to recognize Danny Octor, Elizabeth Huertas, Katie Lamb, Lila Tuckah, Mike Wilms and Sabrina Yang. So congratulations to those students for being inducted in the National Business Honor Society. And then last week, the Grafton Lions did their citizenship award, their annual citizenship award. I unfortunately was ill and not able to attend, but I know Mr. Kaler was there and spoke very highly of the students. Bob Hoffman had sent us a picture that we've used on social media to recognize those students as well. But Abigail Sebolka, Gretchen Geiser, Jenna Grandinetti and Jenna Kloss were the students being recognized by the Grafton Lions for their citizenship award. And I know last year, hearing the accolades of the students was great to hear and I'm sure there was no difference this year for those students.
Very impressive to see what they do academically and through extracurriculars too.
Yeah, so what they do academically as well as their extracurricular pieces giving back to our community. So, congratulations to those students and representing our high school and our community very well. And then last week was the Wisconsin State Education Convention. Myself and Topher were down there on Wednesday and Thursday, Diana came down on Thursday for some sessions. Ms. Wallace and Ms. Maila also came down on Thursday. They were down there on Friday and heard the governor speak. We had a meeting with Hoffman, so we weren't able to go down on Friday. But it's an opportunity to hear some sessions from various people. One of the things that we heard, we went to a legislative update, and one of the pieces that we heard is similar to what we're talking about with our budget projection, is to be conservative with our budgeting, not knowing what the next budget will be without knowing. And so definitely the legislative update was to say to all districts to be conservative, looking ahead to the future with not knowing what kind of increase there may be or may not be per pupil. So we have the biennial budget this year and next year, so we know what that increase is, but it may or may not occur in the future. So, good feedback there. I went to one on from the Elm Brook School District about promoting the district and some of the different things that they do and really align well with some of the things that we wanted to do in our district as well with promoting some of the changes that have occurred and ways to do that, whether it's through a reel or lunch or various things of, we've talked about bringing back the highlighter and keeping the various, how do we keep chalkboard, excuse me, the chalkboard back to our community and keeping, how do we keep track, keep contact with parents that don't have kids in our school or just regular citizens in our community that don't have any children at all. So how do we continue that discussion? We engage them a lot with the referendum, how do we continue doing that? So some ideas that we'll be bringing forward to keep doing that. But it's a great opportunity to interact and build some rapport with other superintendents as well as hearing what other districts are doing, reinforcing some of the things that we're doing as well. So, so that's my update.
Okay, thanks.
One last thing I would say is the, it's not on the agenda, but the Super Bowl is coming up for CEF on, on GEF on, at the, I got all kinds of things going through in my mind, it's not on my thing. I'm like, the Super Bowl, is it the Cedars on Saturday? And I think they have bowling completed.
Yes, there might be one or two more slots open for teams if anyone wants to make it to New York.
I saw something on social media that showed board members from last year. There was a, you know, challenge, I think, so I don't know if the board has another team participating. They do?
They have to defend the championship.
You have to defend the championship. There was something on social media showing an interesting picture, so I saw that and shared that. So, but that's an exciting thing and a great opportunity, so make sure you purchase raffle ticket, there'll be all kinds of fun things.
There's less than 50 raffle tickets left.
Oh, great.
And they're only selling 250.
Okay, 250 at $100 apiece for a $10,000 grand prize? So great opportunity to support our students that they do with us, and so we want to make sure you do that.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thanks. So we're lucky to have the Woodview Elementary School presentation tonight. Mr. McMahon, I'll let you take it over.
Well, thank you for letting us come present. We want to take this opportunity to think about new things that are happening at Woodview and showcase some of the cool, exciting new things that we're either piloting or trying this year. And so, while school goals aren't new, we've had those all along, that's not anything new. Passion projects are something new and Seesaw is also something new. But I do want to quickly recap our school goals and do some justice to that because there are some new components to that. In the past, we've always had a reading and math goal, and our reading and math goal are tied to growth. We want our students to continue to show growth, that increase from, growth from fall to spring. For example, in the area of reading, or I'm sorry, of math, we want 67% of our students to meet or show their growth on map from fall to spring. The other side of our math growth goal is we want our students that are getting extra intervention or extra support in the area of math to also show growth. Knowing that we're impacting students through what we call I-time in the area of math, reading, we're also impacting them in the other areas, which is why we have students here to present in a second. So, like I said, math is not a new goal, reading is not a new goal, so I'm trying to keep you on the edge of your seat. Reading, we also have goals. 95% of our students in 5K through 5th, we want to see a growth of one rit point in the area of math. That's that low hanging fruit, we want to see some growth. We also look from spring to spring goals in the area of F&amp;P, we want our students to show some growth. 70% of our students, we really want to see that fall to spring goal, growth in the area of map. We just finished our winter map window, so we'll check in on that mid-year growth goal to see how we're doing in the area of reading. But what is new this year is we added some new goals connected to behavior and communication. That was something we really thought about as we thought of our tier or our Title I school-wide system, is we wanted to tie some growth to behavior and communication. Each day, we focus on our positive things that we're doing within behavior. We have the positively awesome Woodview students, we have pause tickets that we're handing out to think about the positive things that are doing, think students are doing throughout the school. But on the negative side, we also want to reteach when there's opportunities for behavior to be re-taught. So we have two systems, we have minor behaviors and major behaviors. The major behaviors are the students that come see me for what we would consider maybe, maybe more serious. For example, a fight on the playground as a result in a conversation with me in the office. We want to go through some restorative practices having a conversation, and so we want to see some growth. And we will hope that those students don't come back to the office again. So our behavior goal is that we want 85, or 80% of our students K5 to respond to our Tier 1 interventions or Tier 1 behaviors having zero or one major BTF. And we are certainly successful at this point, we have 95% of our students with zero or one major visit to talk to me. I'll keep you in the loop on how that's going, but last year we were able to exceed that 80% in our growth, and our goal is to exceed again this year. Our other goal, which is really important and connected to some of the things that we're doing tonight, is tied to communication. We want to find multiple ways to engage parents, get them into the school and do some things that showcase our students' learning. One opportunity was just this last week, I brought some 4th and 5th grade parents in to look at some data. We had 10 4th grade parents and 11 5th grade parents come in and talk, and we talked about data, we talked about their students' goals and we talked about, believe it or not, ACT scores, talking about college entrance. And it was a really exciting night. But we want to find other ways to showcase our student learning, and one of those things was through our passion projects. So Passion Projects was an idea that Jen Griffith and I came up with this fall. Knowing that our I-time is this opportunity for students to work on math and writing and social studies and get some enrichment opportunities and intervention opportunities, we thought, what can we do differently? Our 3rd through 5th grade students share a time, 30 minutes a day. All of our 3rd and 5th, 3rd through 5th grade students have this block that we wanted to really get them together and start thinking about extending their learning. So Jen had this great idea called Passion Projects. It morphed from Genius Hour, which I know you heard from the GES staff talk about. But I wanted a couple of students to kind of talk us through what those projects were, what they did. And so you can see, we had a number of 3rd grade students, a number of 4th grade students, a number of 5th grade students go through this process of developing their passion into either a model, a presentation, a poster, and we really took kind of what we learned from High Tech High in the movie last year to then bring parents into a showcase event. So we brought a little piece of that showcase event to you tonight, and so I'd like to invite a couple of my Woodview friends up to present their passion projects to you. So, Matthew Ipert, why don't you come up? His passion project is a model, and he's brought it with us tonight. And so I'm going to take you through some questions, Matthew, and you can answer for the board. What was your passion?
Um, exploring the parts of a computer.
So you had lots of time to research on a computer, right? What are some things that you found on the computer, about the computer?
That there's a whole ton of different parts in a computer.
Yeah, do you want to share some of those parts, or are you ready to go?
Mm-hmm. This here, the hard drive, and it stores all the information that you put in the computer and some examples are videos, programs and pictures. Here, right here, is a write memory card, it's called RAM. And they remember everything you put on the computer, but once you shut it down, it goes away. If you have more RAM, your computer will work faster. This is a video card, connects the computer to a monitor or a projection screen. This is a motherboard, it runs all the computer, all the parts of the computer plug into the motherboard. It's kind of like the brain of the computer. This is a DVD player, it plays DVDs and CDs. And this is a fan that keeps the computer from overheating.
So Matthew, along with all of his peers, presented to a group of parents that came in and asked questions of their presentation. We also talked a lot about what can we do with these passions? Do you plan on using your knowledge of computers in the future, Matthew, in a career someday?
Maybe.
Does anyone have any questions for Matthew on his research and his passion of computers?
Matthew, can you hold one of those things up so I can take a picture of you, buddy? Can you hold, hold on those pieces up and then look over here? Great, thanks, buddy.
All right, let's give Matthew a round of applause.
Great job.
Our 4th grade presenter is Max Mardre, and he is working on, what did we say, this is?
Uh, well, the robot?
It's number 17, it's model number 17.
Uh, because it went through a ton of different models. So basically, at first, it was just the body, you know, just a piece, just two boxes. So then we put in the insides. I researched a lot of different types of robots, and it turns out, they don't have to have all the wires and stuff. They can just be a model, as long as they have some sort of function or something that they have to do. I would show you, but the marbles, and sometimes they go flying all over the place, I don't want it. Try that? They roll out here, I was going to try to add something to that, but, yeah, it shakes. And then we had to add the bottom piece back here to make sure he doesn't fall over when he shakes. So I went through a lot of different models and a lot of research went into him. I even made all my own set of blueprints to show the inside.
So talk a little bit about the process, Max, how did you decide on robots?
Well, I really liked engineering and I thought, why not try to do a little bit of a harder challenge in it? Like I knew that Colin, one of the 5th grade people who was doing it, they actually did engineering, but they were just focusing on the different types of engineering. So I thought, why not just work on trying to make a robot so I could show basically what it could be used for? And that went through using a lot of different books, using, looking on the internet for different, like, things which make a robot so I can make something that technically you count it as a robot.
So once you started developing those passions, why did you decide on a model rather than a presentation or a poster?
Well, I did have a presentation that went with it, but I feel like the model showed a lot more, or it was a lot more explanatory, so I could just point to something if I needed to use it. I guess you could do that for poster too, but I guess this works a lot better, in my opinion.
Does anyone have questions for Max on his model of a robot and all the research that he went into to develop this?
So did you use snap circuits for your?
Uh, just for the bottom, I made a little thing where he talks a little bit or more like makes random robot sounds. That's cool.
Max, what is it doing, what is it supposed to be doing when the marbles fly out?
That sort of shakes a little bit, like this, occasionally it'll move a little forward.
Do you have the marbles with you?
Yep.
Because I would really like to see that.
Yep. That'll shake slightly, uh, just put it down here. That'll shake a little bit. It's had bearing success.
Everyone had a mistake, but when he talks about how it shakes a little bit, that was one of the iterations that he did. He made one and it was so sturdy that when he put the robot, he had two legs. And when he put the marble in it, it didn't shake. So then we had to go back to talking about like, okay, it doesn't have a function anymore. So then he had to go and do the next change.
One leg, then it didn't stand up, so we had to put on the bottom piece. And then it'd still fall over then, so I thought I would fix it more up before this.
So this is about 1.17, right?
Yeah.
Let's give Max a round of applause. And our 3rd presenter is Paul Crystal. And Paul has developed what we think can change the game of football. So Paul, what was your passion?
Uh, I love playing football for the Gladiators. And I thought, you know, it's a great game, but injuries really give it a bad name. So I thought, how could I make the game better and more fun for everybody? So I made an ACL brace for running backs that is smaller and more compact and much easier to use. Because a lot of people don't use braces and things to prevent injuries because they think it's going to slow them down or lower their performance. So I tried to make one that would barely cause any effect and be very light for positions that you need to run, like wide receiver and running back. So...
So why did you choose running back, Paul?
Uh, it's also used for other positions, but mainly running back because running backs, they are injured a lot, actually the most commonly. And they're most likely hurt by ACL injuries. So I found this brace to put on your knee, I created it. And I made, I made it so it was light, compact and really easy to slip on. So I would have gels, which is just green tape, but it would be gels, that would hold it on and make sure it doesn't fall off. And I also would have something that isn't a sock, but it's a sock, to make it so it's, you can put it on and off. Also, ACLs can be turned by hitting on the side or turning inward with pressure. So like if you were going to make a sharp cut or hit on the side, it would most likely tear. So I would have padding here, and this would hold it from moving. So I also, also I would make it out of, um, yeah.
So Paul originally decided that he wanted to do some research on football. He said, what can we dig in, how can we dive into maybe solving a problem with football? And so he really did a lot of research on the most injured position, and then he did some research on the knee, and then he did some research on how to develop an efficient, quick brace. And that night, he had lots of people taking a look at this prototype, and he is willing to demonstrate how quick it works. So let's run to the, we'll run to the projector board and back. So it was cool to see him come up with a prototype that's fully functional. Have we tested it on the football field yet though? Not yet. But we also thought, what can you do with this for a future career, Paul?
Uh, I thought I could make football a better game for everybody and every running back could want one of these or a wide receiver, just to help prevent them from getting hurt and making the game better. And...
We talked a lot about how football players make a lot of money. So how much money could we make with this if we could protect those people that make lots of money? Do you want to take some questions, Paul?
Uh, also, the Badgers use braces, but I wanted to make my own because mostly only offensive linemen use braces because they're big and heavy braces. They slow you down, but offensive linemen block, so they're not going to be running across the field and stuff. So, I made one that was smaller and used for positions that include a lot of...
Paul, it sounds like you have an interest in both playing football and helping the athletes. Which would you prefer, to be the player or to be the helper?
The player, but that's very difficult to do. So, if I'm not able to achieve that, then this could very much be my career.
Excellent, good for you. Outstanding.
Let's give Paul a round of applause. The night that we brought in for this presentation, this Passion Project presentation, it really felt like a 1990 science fair, except it's the new era, it's the new model of Passion Projects, and we had a great night. Lots of parents came in showcasing these events, and it really felt like that clip from High Tech High. One other thing that I wanted to quickly showcase, and something that's new at Woodview this year, is the use of Seesaw. And Seesaw is online Facebook for school. However, it's not what you think. It is a way for our teachers to showcase some learning that's happening in our classroom, and it's really connected to our goal of communication and connecting school and learning to our parents and families. And so this is just a quick glimpse at what Seesaw is. All of our students are using Seesaw, all of our teachers are using Seesaw to really give parents a glimpse of what's happening in the classroom on a daily basis. So this is a weekly report I get on every Sunday night. It tells me how many items were posted across our school, how many parents commented on those items, how many likes it got, and then also total parent visits to the Seesaw site. So as we think about impacting parents and getting them a glimpse of what we're learning, this is a perfect opportunity. You can see a couple of examples of what could be posted on Seesaw. The first one on the left is actually student work. It's a student that had done a worksheet, talking about their pets and then writing a sentence using some of the words they came up with to describe a pet, and then that student took a picture with their iPad and posted it themselves. The one, I guess, hiccup that we thought about Seesaw is it seems like a lot of work for a teacher to go around and take all these pictures, but as we've been able to work with kids, kids are posting a lot of the information and then getting that feedback from parents. The other side is we can have teachers that post pictures of presentations and get parents a glimpse. So I took a little glimpse of data as well on what this looks like in our school over the last week since we came, or the last couple of weeks since we came back from breaks. So since January 2nd, when we came back from school, from back from break, we've had over 350 items posted almost on a weekly basis. Our teachers are posting, our students are posting. We're also getting a ton of feedback on a regular basis. We have lots of likes, so as you think about Facebook, you can very quickly put a thumbs up on something, but we also have parents providing comments to students, that students are getting feedbacks, not only from teachers, but also from their parents. We also want to think a lot about parent engagement. So you can see the blue line across is basically, remains steady since that first week of school when we invited parents to be a part of Seesaw. And we have around 222 parents that are connected to Seesaw on a regular basis, connecting to our teachers. And then you can see the red line spiking up and down on the parent visits, maxing out some weeks at over 500 visits to our site. Seesaw is a great opportunity for us to continue to grow and communicate with parents on what's happening in the classroom. And at this point, I've had nothing but positive feedback from parents. I'm really looking forward to extending this learning, not only maybe in our building, but convincing Craig to take it on a little bit too. Questions about Seesaw or Passion Projects?
Where do the students actually work on the Passion Projects?
So Passion Projects is connected to our I-time block right now. Because it works really well 3rd through 5th, and we're all doing this common block, Jen Griffith was available and she did it for 30 minutes twice a week for a six-week period. We did one session in the fall and we're going to do another session this current year. As we think about our scheduling committee, that one of the things that Diana and Craig and I have talked about however is that if you're a student that needs extra intervention or extra support or even enrichment, does that mean you can't have a passion then, because you're seeing a teacher for intervention? So how can we provide an opportunity for all students, whether they need intervention or enrichment, to also have a passion and be a part of a Passion Project? So that's something that our scheduling team is considering too. Great question. Other questions on Seesaw or Passion Projects?
Is everyone using Seesaw?
Yeah, all of our teachers are using Seesaw. We bought a license, our PTG funded, the PTG funded $1,400 cost for our school-wide Seesaw account, and so every teacher is making at least one post on every student on a weekly basis.
Is that every, I know GES does it, is that all schools, right?
This is like a pilot that Michael's trying, and we purchased some additional iPads for title funds to support it, and then we plan on moving that forward to...
One really cool thing that we've seen is students having a pre-test and taking a video of themselves, taking a look at their pre-test and then taking their post-test and showing the growth and talking about their growth through just one quick, one-minute video, that we're seeing students do that and share with parents. So rather than just taking the post-test home and saying, this is what I learned, or this is what I got right or wrong, we have students talking about it. It's a really cool video, a lot of our 5th graders are doing that.
Michael, can you just, I'm a question about all of the schools. So some teachers in all of the buildings are using it, so even at GES there are a few pockets of teachers, so we are working, growing that, and we are working on a pilot at Kennedy as well right now.
Thanks, thanks for letting me say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for our students.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Dearing, is your team, is everyone here?
Yeah, I think so, there's a lot back here.
Then we will, I see a lot of people, so we'll move you up, and then we'll move to the audit next. Yep, the next thing you guys can bring, come on up. Thank you, congratulations.
Okay, so in the interest of accommodating a large group of middle school representatives, we're going to just go out of order for one item, we're going to move the John Long Middle School schedule up now so they can get in and get out. So I'll give it over to you, Mr. Dearing, unless Jeff, you want to?
So Mr. Dearing has had a scheduling team, he'll walk us through that whole piece. He's updated the board at the last curriculum committee meeting. There's been various updates that have been provided, and they've come to a recommendation that they're going to be sharing tonight with the board to make sure there's no concerns or questions that are still out there as we look ahead to the 18, 19 school year. So he'll walk us through the process, and he has a large number of team standing behind him.
So, good evening, everybody, thank you for having us. We have split up the presentation so that you're not just hearing from me, so we have various members of our team that will speak, and at the end we'll open it up for questions. So forming the team, coming into my, at the end of my first year at John Long Middle School, we had looked at some concerns that we had with the scheduling and meeting the needs of all students as far as intervention, enrichment and those opportunities, and are we utilizing our win time to the best of ability in capturing that opportunity for kids? So, back last year, 1617, I put out a, brought it up in December, got volunteers from our staff. I wanted grade level representation, special education, representation, related arts, music, school counselor, college and career coach, parents, administrators, so we had a very large team. So we had, we had a very large team. Um, I reached out to a couple of parents that were a part of our PTG or had connection with the PTG in 16, 17 at that time, uh, which led me to Stacy Ringold and Tiffany Santos. She's hiding, she's hiding on us. So a huge thank you to, I put all their names up here because everybody on this team sacrificed a lot, had to go through a lot of tough decision-making, tough conversations. So Stacy Ringold, Tiffany Santos, Joanne Ward, Nikki Matthews, Sarah Stanslowski, Michelle Chop, Lori Mathias, Jen Juris, Brett Demmer, Bonnie Brady, Elizabeth Minty and Doug Art. A huge thank you to that committee. Lot of time put in. So that was forming the team. I'm going to quick review the process and I'm going to hand it over to let them kind of give details of the process. From last year to this year, we've had nine team meetings. Uh, we've researched over 15-plus middle schools, their schedules, what's good, what's bad, uh, what are comparables to us have as far as periods, blocks, number of related arts based on whether your block or periods. We narrowed it down to performing site visits at Greendale and Webster Middle Schools. Uh, we, our team ended the process by looking at five different options, narrowed it down to our final recommendation, which we're, we'll go through here tonight. Um, and then upcoming, we'll still have a presentation to sixth and seventh grade parents, a presentation to them prior to their students going into the scheduling process. Again, their students and parents will also be informed of the options their child has when they bring home to talk about the courses they'd like to take as a seventh and eighth grader. And then as always, we will do an orientation for incoming fifth graders as parents as we do every year. So that will be upcoming. So I'm going to hand it over to Joanne Ward, who is going to talk about priorities and non-negotiables.
Um, the first thing we did when we formed the committee is we got together and brainstormed a list of priorities. Well, what would we change in the schedule if we could? And you can see the list on the lap. First and foremost, we wanted intervention and enrichment time for all kids. Um, we wanted to be able to provide intervention and enrichment every day on a regular basis. We talked about having a homeroom sort of organization time, either at the beginning of the day or the end of the day. We valued having common team prep times. And we also were going to try to avoid having blocks back-to-back without a break for kids. From that list, we then created a list of non-negotiables, things that we just really felt we had to have. And that list is on the right. And that was to have that 30-minute intervention time and enrichment time for all kids. Uh, we absolutely believe that blocks were something we wanted to keep. Um, we also wanted to have related, or related arts course times remain at 42 minutes. So that was our non-negotiable list. And then Elizabeth's going to talk to us about the site visits.
All right. So after poring over our 15-plus schedules, uh, we decided the two buildings we wanted to visit to see the schedules in action and to talk to principals and teachers were Greendale and Webster. And we were able to, um, get some valuable takeaways from both. From Greendale, we got ideas for making our academic and career planning more consistent building-wide and how to structure that into our day. Um, we also got ideas for enhancing our literacy practices. We chose to visit Greendale because they had a literacy block at the beginning of the day. We quickly realized that wouldn't work with our block schedules, but they gave us some good ideas for how to integrate that into our longer school blocks. So we could still do what we saw that we liked within that structure that our teachers preferred. Um, and our visit to Greendale really did affirm our non-negotiable prioritization of the block. It, Greendale is not on a block, so we weren't able to adopt their physical schedule, but we found quite a few advantages. Um, and the teachers we talked to agreed that our structure had some very good advantages. Webster is much more similar to the schedule we ended up recommending. Um, their current schedule reflected our priorities, reflected our non-negotiables, and had some excellent ideas for how to structure that universal intervention and enrichment time so that it could be meaningful for all students, whether they required an intervention or not. One of the things we wanted to move away from was in the current win structure, there's a block of time where students have more of an unstructured study hall. Middle school students aren't known for their ability to organize time very well, so we wanted to give a little more support and structure to that. And they gave us some excellent ideas for that, as well as some additional ideas for ACP, Academic and Career Planning.
Um, it makes sense, I guess, to have me talk about related arts offerings as a choir director and the associate principal of the building. So, uh, with our non-negotiables remaining with the block schedule in place and core classes not having a reduction in time, um, when we, when we decided to integrate an intervention block school-wide, that required us to, uh, the reduction of the win period, the study hall, uh, time. Um, because of that, the band and choir programs are being shifted into the related arts time. And you'll see that when we get to our, our schedule structure. Um, so because that moved, now we have an abundance of offerings in related arts classes. And what we saw in the site visits and in the other schools that we've, um, studied were the fact that with a school our size, we really had a plethora of related arts offerings, probably more than our numbers support fiscally. Um, so with that, um, we've had to make some adjustments to stabilize our FTEs and to still give students a broad array of offerings. So we'll have music offerings. Um, again, band and choir will be during the related arts time blocks, uh, time, the skinnies we'll call them. Um, sixth grade will have them every day like they do now, um, as, um, a requirement by state for music classes. Art is required in sixth grade. You'll see that that's still happening and that it's still offered in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, foreign language will still be offered in seventh and eighth grade. Tech Ed and STEM were two related arts offerings that really have, uh, a similar content. Um, and we, we found no other school that actually offered both of those programs. Uh, so those two programs will be consolidating into one program. Um, and they will, they will remain a STEM program. Um, and then PE and health will have fewer reductions to, um, uh, more, more closely be related to our student population and to level off class sizes. And now Mr. Demmer will talk about music offerings.
Well, as Doug mentioned, uh, some of the biggest changes in this new schedule come to the related arts areas. Um, as he mentioned, the current setup is that we have two related arts periods per day. Every student has that in addition to a win, where if they choose, they can participate in band and/or choir. With the elimination of the win, as Doug mentioned, the band and choir move to the related arts period. So the 200 or so students who have selected about 240 or so slots, because some of them double, uh, they move, uh, into the related arts period, uh, for taking, uh, band and choir. So what does that look like specifically by grade? Again, sixth grade is required to participate in a music class, state requirement. And so they will choose one, band, choir or general music. They cannot participate in multiple, uh, ensembles during the school day. The schedule won't allow for that. Um, seventh and eighth grade, depending upon the other related arts classes that they would choose, they can participate in both band and choir. Again, it just depends on, on what they choose. Uh, we talk about the doublers. Those are the kids that, that, uh, participate in both band and choir. A student can still double, which is again, singing and choir and playing in band, if they participate in one of the morning extracurricular ensembles. So if a student participates in choir during the school day, wants to participate in jazz band in the morning, that is, uh, definitely an option for them. So kids that are not able to participate in both band and choir during the school day would still have the option by, uh, taking part in one of the extracurricular ensembles that, that meet in the morning.
Something not changing is the core class time during the day. We had one of our priorities as having the block times. So sixth, seventh and eighth grade are still having E and ELA in math for 87 minutes every single day as the block. And then science and social studies are still having every other day 87 minutes as a block. Um, the sixth grade course, this kind of lays out a little bit for you. Um, for the first period of related arts, they will have PE and health every other day. Um, and then music, that is where they will pick their one elective of either band, choir or their general music elective. The second hour then, it will be a trimester rotation. So all sixth graders will take this. They'll have art for one trimester, STEM for one trimester, and then digital communications for one trimester.
At seventh and eighth grade, they will have a little bit more choice as far as what they, uh, get for the related arts classes. So opposite PE, all seventh graders will have one semester of STEM and then one semester of digital communication. So those will be required courses. And then they will get to choose two additional ones between band, choir, art, Spanish or German. Now at eighth grade, they get a little bit more choice. Again, if they do choose a, a language, if they choose German or Spanish, that would count as two of their choices. Um, so they'd be left with just one other additional choice. If they don't go with one of the world languages, then they would get three choices because they would be then semester, well, they would be full-year classes, but every other day.
So one of the biggest benefits of this schedule is that we will have our new, as yet unnamed time that will replace win. Um, and the biggest benefit of that is that we can give that intensive tier-three intervention support to any student without having to cost them other opportunities. Currently, if you're a student who struggles in an academic area, you can get support in that academic area or you can get band or choir. You can't do both. Um, and we just, we always feel bad when we have to talk to a student or talk to parents and say, "Your student really shouldn't be in band or choir right now because they struggle with reading or math." That's a horrible thing to say. That's not what we ever want the choice to be. We want them to be able to do both. So that is, um, one of the biggest advantages is that now we'll be able to provide those foundational interventions to all students. Additionally, by having that time at the same time for the whole building, we'll be able to be more targeted and more efficient with what we do during that time. Currently, we offer those interventions stretched across three different times of the day, a sixth grade block, a seventh grade block and an eighth grade block. So if you are a sixth grader and you have a math struggle, you're lumped together with every other sixth grader who struggles in math. Sixth grade students who are struggling don't always have the same needs. Now we'll be able to have six, eight together. And so we'll have more staff and more resources to offer more targeted interventions that are actually for what the students need. So if we have students who still need very foundational skills, we can have a multi-age group. If we have students who need support with closer to grade-level content, we can have a multi-age group. We can have groups that go faster or slower. We can really target that to what we need. Another support that we'll be able to provide, that we don't currently provide, is a guided study hall option for students who struggle with what we call academic behaviors. Um, that's issues with maybe note-taking or work completion, handing things in on time, preparing for tests. Um, right now, we're a little scattershot with how we're able to offer that. With this structure, again, we can have teachers who during that time, take a small group of kids who need a very structured study hall where they're taught study skills and where the teacher is able to monitor their work completion and the quality with which they're working. And we'll be able to do that within the school day. And then we'll have expanded opportunities again for, you know, students who may have social, emotional needs or support that we're currently not offering anything for. We could do groups and our student services departments can offer more during this time as well, because it's an all-hands-on-deck time for the whole school.
Another thing that's come up is, uh, some of the comments from special education teachers, what about my students who maybe need more of that one-on-one time? And we talked about being able to do their specialized instruction instead of having, again, to pull them from one of their core classes or one of their related arts offerings to do the specialized instruction. They can now use this time to do that. And then if it's a day where one of those students isn't getting, um, specialized instruction, they can remain with that teacher and have more support as kind of a guided study hall option to keep them with them to help make sure that they can have that success. The other kids in the building will be on an enrichment course rotation, uh, depending on the amount of kids that need specialized intervention. We're looking to have five to six rotations throughout the year, which teachers will develop kind of those fun extending opportunities for kids. Um, examples that I've, that I've shared with some people, their ideas have come up, starting a school newspaper, teaching kids how to do some journalism. Uh, math teacher talked about, uh, how to interpret and do statistics, you know, looking at the kind of those fun statistics, whether it's sports or analysis of other things. So those courses will be developed. But one thing that we, we've seen going into this is still talking about, what about retakes? And is there still time to talk to my teacher if I need that time? So that's where Fridays are going to come in during the week, during this time, which will almost kind of simulate that win-type atmosphere on Fridays. Um, and we'll also use Fridays one time a month to look at our academic career planning and roll that curriculum out, um, so that, that's a better opportunity to meet that school-wide and have all hands on deck with academic career planning. Um, but then you can look at Fridays as that opportunity to retakes, so kids don't have to do it before or after school. They can still get it done on Fridays. Um, they can, they can meet with teachers to get that extra help. Student council is one of those things that because of all the other activities kids are in, we haven't been able to have a strong student council. Um, our, I know our two advisors are excited that the opportunity of being able to rejuvenate the student council and those leadership opportunities at the middle school, looking at Fridays as well to, to do that. So really excited that the team has made, um, a lot of tough decisions. Um, and we understand that with, with everything, if there was a perfect schedule, every, every middle school would have the perfect schedule, but there's not. Um, but we do think that this is going to better meet the needs of our student population, be able to provide those intervention enrichments with, uh, and extend that win time of 42 minutes, uh, to really make it a productive time for all students. Uh, I'm going to hand it over now to a parent, Stacy, to talk about what our new daily schedule would look like.
All right. So just to reiterate what everyone had, um, just mentioned, as a visual, this is what our proposed sample schedule would look like, like at each grade level. As you can see, the unnamed time, the intervention and enrichment is across the board, um, for all grade levels at the same time. And that's going to be able to target every student, um, whether you're a lower-functioning student, a middle-of-the-road student or a higher-achieving student, we're going to be able to support those students, um, at every level. And as you can also see, the blocks, we do not have any more blocked, back-to-back block times, which is currently, the back-to-back block times are currently happening now. Um, so a student would have three, four, have math, have lunch quick, and then go to ELA from six, seven, and then eight, nine, have science or social studies. Um, so these are our proposed, um, sample schedules for sixth, seventh and eighth grade.
Would there be an opportunity if a student, let's say, was in seventh or eighth grade and doing sport to instead of doing, and they do not need any convention or anything, to have the opportunity instead of wanting to be a elective course, to take six weeks off just to do a regular study hall? Like during the peak of their season, they're really needing that time just to keep up on?
It's something we haven't looked at, but that would be something that we could certainly, if a student starts struggling, could move them into a supported study hall. That's, that, that could certainly be an option. Again, seeing that, but the one thing that we've seen a lot from a lot of our teachers is because of the block schedule, they're doing a lot more of their class, classwork as their client. Oh, I mean, they're doing their work in class. But if that were to be something that were to come up, I think that's something we'd look at.
I have a question. Um, regarding the enrichment courses, you said there are going to be six-week courses. Now, the kids who are in those, will they have to take each one? But, so they're not options? I just want to?
Correct. They will, they will rotate directly through, uh, each of those throughout the year. And then in seventh grade, they would go to the next rotation of five to six courses. And in eighth grade, they would have a different. So by the time they get through their middle school experience, they would have had 15 different mini-courses, um, for growth and opportunities to see different things. That's why, I mean, we really, the intention really is to have kids in the rotation of these enrichment courses. Um, and the, the original intent of the, the guided study hall time was really for those kids that are in, are in pretty serious need. And through, um, you know, through a process of identification by staff, those, those students would be recommended for that. It wouldn't really be at the student's request because I'm busy. That was the original intent. Now, that can be revisited, but if the original intent was, if you're not identified by staff, you're in an enrichment course and you're in the track with, with the group getting those experiences.
So what changes on Friday? Walk me through that structure and then on Fridays, that it's more like the win time before.
I'll take that. Can you go back to the?
Yep.
So the daily schedule would be exactly the same, which is what we like because you're not running like a different schedule one day a week. The difference is that during that blue time, instead of being in intervention or doing work for that enrichment course, you would go to the same location you went Monday through Thursday. But instead of that teacher having something planned for you, you could get a pass to work with another teacher. You could get a pass to make up a test. You could go to the library. You could go to a club. So it'll be, um, a, a system where they check in for attendance purposes and then they can check out with a pass to do whatever they. check out with a pass to do whatever they... Resource.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to our audit report.
Topper?
It's a bummer to get moved down the list.
I don't have to follow all the little kids now, so I don't seem quite as boring as I would have if I had to follow...
Now, but before you start, I did bring extra copies of the audit for anyone who didn't bring the original one. I handed out a while back.
It's carried. Twice, only twice.
Oh, good luck.
That was many years ago.
Twelve and nine.
Wow.
You've been here a long time.
Yes.
All right. So I always ask, instead of doing my normal, like, presentation of what numbers are in there, is just kind of walk you through how this thing works, so that you can kind of get a feel for it. So instead, I mean, you can still ask some questions if you want to know about the numbers and stuff in there. But I'll just do a quick walkthrough of how this thing kind of flows. So the first two pages, pages one and two, that's our auditor's report. So this is where we put our opinion on the basic financial statements. The one you have is it's an unmodified opinion, so we're saying that the statements are fairly presented. When you move to the next section, it's pages three to 13. That's the management discussion and analysis. This actually isn't prepared by us. It's prepared by the district staff. It summarizes what's in the financial statements, gives information on some of the current events that affected them, and then some factors that could bear on the district's future. We read it, we check the numbers and make sure they match, but it's not prepared by us. It's just required to be in there. And as you go forward, pages 14 to 20, these are the basic financial statements. There's actually two different types of statements in there. There's the district-wide statements, and then there's the fund statements. Pages 14 and 15 are the district-wide statements. This includes all the activity of the district put together as a whole. They're presented on the accrual basis, which this means is that all of your capital assets of the district are included, so your buildings, your land, your equipment, and then all of the long-term liabilities are included. So all your bonds, your pension liabilities, your OPEB liabilities. Those are included on those two pages. Pages 16 and 18, these are the fund statements. It provides information about the district's different funds. The presentation is by fund, so you'll see that there's a general fund, and then there's a big one called non-major funds. These are the smaller ones, and the detail on those is in the back, which I'll get to. These are prepared on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which means the focus is more on what's measurable and available, or what's current. They don't include capital assets or long-term liabilities on them. So then pages 17 and 19, these pages provide a reconciliation between the two types of statements. So page 17 is going to reconcile the total fund balance of what's in the funds to the total net position of the district-wide presentation. So basically, it's reconciling your two different balance sheets, if you want to think of it that way. Page 19 reconciles the activity for, for the year of the funds to the district-wide activity, or basically reconciling the two different income statements. So it'll show you all the differences, basically, between the current presentation and then the full accrual basis. Then the last one, page 20, presents the statements of the fiduciary fund, so it shows what's in the student activities fund and in the scholarship fund. Then as you move on, page 21 to 41, these are the footnotes. These contain the required disclosure for the financial statements. So basically, it gives you more detailed information on the various aspects that were in those basic financial statements, and what makes up some of the numbers in there, like what all your debt issues are, what kind of fixed assets you have, things like that. Once you get past there, pages 43 to 49, this is what is the required supplementary information. It's pages that are required by GASB to be included. So it's going to give you your budgetary comparison schedules for both the general and the special education funds, your schedules related to the WRS pension liability, and then your schedules related to the other pensions and OPEB liabilities. The following pages, 51 to 56, is some other supplementary information. So it's additional schedules, some of which are required by DPI, some by other funding sources. This is where you'll have your combining schedules for the non-major funds, so you can see what on there adds together to be in that column on pages 16 and 18. And then there's also a schedule of expenditures of state and expenditures of federal awards. These are required by DPI and the federal granters, so that they see the total that's been given to you by state sources and federal sources. And we use this for the rest of the report. So pages 57 to the end is the grant reporting. Those are there for the federal funding sources and then also for DPI. We put in there what findings we have. This year, there were no compliance findings. There were two findings, but they're significant deficiencies, so they're financial statement findings. They're basically, we're required to put them in there if we have these items. And they're not uncommon, they're very common for your size. One is that there's not an ideal segregation of duties. You're operating your accounting and reporting function with a limited number of staff. So it's not ideal, but really, without hiring more people, there's nothing you can do about it, but we have to include this in there. And then the second being the financial statement preparation, that we, as your auditors, prepare the financial statements and footnote disclosures. Again, very common for your size, but when we do this, we just have to put it in there to make you all aware that we're the ones that are putting that together, and then it's being reviewed by the district. We also have a letter, but before I go into that, do you actually have any questions on what was in there or how it all works? It's kind of big and bulky, but...
As you say, very common size for your financial statement, like eighty percent?
There's, I'd say ninety or more.
Ninety or more?
Yeah. I mean, really, to be able to get all the GASB that's always changing, all the disclosures that have to be in there, you'd have to be a CPA that's keeping up to date on all the changes that are going on. So it's more common for us to prepare them and then have it be reviewed and okayed by someone on the staff. And then we also, if you have it in front of you, I don't, did you give them a letter too?
Yeah, here's the...
We also have a letter that we give every year. The first page, it's, it's going to be a, basically, a duplicate of those two items I just talked about, where in this letter, we have to say if there's any significant deficiencies. So those two items are in there as well. And then we say that there were no material weaknesses, which, there's two types of internal-controlled deficiencies, a significant deficiency and a material weakness. The material weakness is the larger of the two, saying that this could cause a material, material error in your financial statement. So we're saying there's none of those. There's just the two significant deficiencies, which I said are very common. And then we also have a couple of other matters that are not considered deficiencies or weaknesses, just some other things that we come across, that we like to make you aware of when we find them. First being the gift fund or Fund 21. Fund 21 is used to report gifts specified by donors to be used for specific projects or items. It shouldn't be used for collections of fees or admissions. We noted that several transactions are being recorded to Fund 21 that actually should be in Fund 10 or the general fund. These are related to items of student and athletic fees. Really, any fees collected should be going through the general fund and not through one of the other funds. Student activity funds are Fund 60. District activity funds are co-curricular activities in which students participate but are administered by the district. District currently has, it's called a general or a wash account for each school, which is on Fund 60. Includes items that should be recorded in Fund 10 as well, such as book replacement or miscellaneous supplies. They should be going through the general fund and not through student activity. And the last two are just informational. GASB 75, that's a new one coming out. It's for next year. It's going to require the district to accrue their net unfunded OPEB liabilities, so it's going to change what you have been seeing for your OPEB liability. What I'm going to do here, I might be able to find what it is, but instead of doing that calculation we've been doing, where it's basically if you're underfunding each year, what the actuary says, you put that difference on, it's saying you have to record the full actuarially determined liability. So if it was this year, it would have been $2,488,000 would have been the full liability. So that's just to make you aware, when you see a bigger number there next year, that's why they're changing how they're doing it. And in order to do that, you're going to need a new actuarial study completed for next year. And then the rest of that letter is all standard items that we have to tell you about, so I'm not going to go through them again every year unless you want me to. Or if you have any questions for me.
Just the, the, you know, there is a supplemental pension relative to the $15,000 per five year.
Say that again.
The supplemental pension kind of, you know, is, I mean, $15,000 per year for five years.
Yes, should be, yeah.
How is that different than voluntary retirement benefits to teachers who retired prior March of 2016, who love now? Are they somehow different because of the changes in the...
What page are you on?
On page 36, 37, and 38. And we'll take this off, too, just out of curiosity. If in the past, those retirement benefits were other OPEB items, now we just characterize them as supplemental pension funds?
Well, it actually changed, there was another GASB, 73. And this, this relates to the supplemental pension. So it required those items to be recorded at their full liability amount this year. Yeah. And the, the other liabilities, so the OPEB amounts, they're required next year. So they had to be split out to implement the one portion of the GASB this year. Yeah. They like to make it confusing and more work.
That, that makes sense.
Yep.
Any questions?
All right. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Personnel report.
Personnel report. We are asking the board to approve a fourth-grade teacher at Grafton Elementary School with unfortunate passing of Ms. Ruland. Natalie was the student teacher over at Kennedy, and will be joining the fourth-grade team for the rest of the year as that fourth-grade teacher.
Questions? On favor, say aye. Aye. Vote. Budget projection. Will that's a top or...
I'll throw that to Topper. Not more than one of us.
So, this is going to be a continued review of what was thoroughly examined at the last finance committee meeting. And I've included a memo that outlines some of the expenditure assumptions leading into the 2018-19 budget, including increases in salaries, projected increases in premium renewals, changes in OPEB costs, as well as changes, inflationary changes to some of the other areas of the budget. And then along with that would come some assumptions regarding our revenue for 2018-19, which includes a projected decrease in our revenue limit, as well as an increase next year. Because we're in the second year of the biennial, this is law, we're expecting to see over $400,000 in our per-pupil aid. And so, if we take a look at some of the, some of the additional handouts that were in there, you'll see the projected budget piece right here now. It's up on the screen. So we're comparing next year's projected budget to this year's current budget with all those assumptions that are tied into here. In addition, as you recall, last year that we did pass a, essentially a deficit budget by levying additional funds into Fund 41. This budget right here that we have displayed puts that back in as if we hadn't done that to have a better comparison of the two budgets. And you'll notice that right now, our projected, we have a projected deficit for 2018-19 of over $31,000. And you'll notice a couple other pieces of information down at the bottom. We have some non-recurring exemptions that will disappear and fall off next year, or that would fall off following 2018-19, creating some potential deficits for 2019-20. And I'll move on to the next, next page to sort of outline how we, how we got there. This is using a survival cohort method of projecting our membership. And as we've mentioned, membership is really the key driver of how much revenue the district has available to fund our operations. And so we use this, and this information in the following sheet, which is our revenue projection, which will shortly be coming up on the screen. So what we have here is the current year, the current year budget, 17-18. And just quickly reviewing, we had a drop in our three-year average because this year's membership of 2009 replaced a larger membership number that was falling off of 2038. So with that drop of 10 in our three-year membership average, our initial calculation ended up about $105,000 less than last year's initial revenue limit calculation. Now, in yellow, you'll see the hold harmless brought us back up to that base, that base revenue limit calculation. And then the declining enrollment exemption, which essentially mirrors that, brought us up above last year's base revenue limit calculation, which ended up providing us with an additional $105,000 in our revenue limit. Now, moving into next year, we're projecting membership of 2022, which is replacing a membership of 2056. So once again, we'll see a drop in our three-year membership average. So when we take a look at our base from the prior year of $21,300,000, we're going to fall short of that, because that initial calculation, taking the 2019, multiplying it by our max revenue per member, which hasn't changed in a number of years and isn't going to change most likely for a number of years, we end up, we end up about $115,000 short of the prior year. The hold harmless brings us back up to that $21,300,000. Then we get an additional $115,000 declining enrollment exemption. That essentially is trying to make up for the loss of these two exemptions from the prior year. They fall off each year and you start over. So that drop off of $210,000 is being replaced by about $115,000, which ultimately means we're about $94,000, $95,000 below last year's level in terms of our revenue limit. However, outside the revenue limit is that per-pupil aid increase, so that significantly aids our budget. Even though we're losing around $95,000 in our revenue limit, we're gaining over $400,000 additionally in per-pupil aid. Now, what becomes a potential challenge is the following year, in 2019, 2020. We, we are projecting a slight drop in our three-year membership average. Now, it's important to note, then, that our initial revenue limit calculation will be a little bit lower than the prior year, because we have three less members, so about $31,000 less. However, it's important to note that these two exemptions fall off. It's $231,000. Now, this first hold harmless exemption will just bring us back to last year's base. We're still short at $231,000. We get an additional $31,000 exemption. That is not going to make up a whole lot of the loss of $230,000, $231,000. That's why for 2019, 2020, we're looking at a potential deficit from the prior year of $200,000 in our revenue limit. In addition, because that will be a new biennial, we do not know if there's going to be an increase in our per-pupil aid. Mr. Nelson mentioned that has been discussed, it's been discussed before, as well as at the convention, that you shouldn't necessarily count on there being an increase in that per-pupil aid because of challenges potentially in future state budgets. So we take that information, and then we actually head back to that first sheet. Whoa, 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 second one, sorry.
Hold this one?
Hang on. Yep, there we go. So that's where those, that loss of almost $231,000 in non-recurring exemptions is listed on here. Potentially, we could even be, have flat three-year membership average, which would mean we wouldn't have any exemptions. Potentially, we have a, a deficit for 2019, 2020 of upwards of $260,000. With that being said, as we move away from a projected budget into a preliminary budget that will be reviewed in May after we make personnel decisions and finalized in June, we're going to be looking to budget funds of that amount as much as possible in things that do not necessarily have to be repeated, things like an additional... Potentially, we have a deficit for 2019, 2020 of upwards of 260,000. With that being said, as we move away from a projected budget into a preliminary budget that will be reviewed in May after we make personnel decisions and finalized in June, we're going to be looking to budget funds of that amount as much as possible in things that do not necessarily have to be repeated, things like an additional transfer into Fund Forty-Six above the 130,000, perhaps an additional levy into Fund Forty-One, or money budgeted for new flexible classroom furniture, that if those things had to be cut in a future budget, we wouldn't be cutting personnel and we wouldn't be cutting programs. Any questions?
So the spot for that is, is that the 19 point was predicated on the Grafton, not a place that you set, that you were placing the unit budget to build the expenses prior to that?
Correct. So working for this 2018-19 budget, as we start building that preliminary budget, we're going to want to have that dollar amount budgeted into something that could be cut that doesn't have to repeat so that we aren't immediately cutting into personnel or programming.
Those two exemptions, the hold harmless and the declining enrollment are always there? Is that going to right eventually?
It can always change. And if you want to shoot down to a more colorful page, oh, yeah, there we go. Yep. So you can see, it's interesting, when you have enrollment, a three-year membership average that's increasing, and that was the last year where we were increasing due to the addition of four-year-old kindergarten, you don't get those exemptions. What you're getting is a larger revenue limit because of this number increasing, and you're multiplying that by that max revenue, so your revenue limit's increasing. Now if we eventually move to a spot where, in fact, our projections would say there's going to be no change in 2020-21, there would be no exemptions because you don't have declining enrollment and your revenue limit calculation is going to be the same as the base from the prior year. So they can actually disappear even if they're not legislated out, but in theory they could be, but these have been, these have been longstanding pieces of the revenue limit calculation. And there hasn't really been any talk of doing away with something like that. Yep. And presenting this kind of points out the interesting juggle that goes on with budgeting. As you recall, Kerry was here presenting the 2016-17 audit. We've just gone over the 2018-19 projected budget, and now we're looking at our current year budget. So we're looking at three different budget years in one sitting, which is very exciting. All right. So this is the first rollout of a budget report we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting. This would be a quarterly report brought to the board. And if you take a look at, well, I guess I'll go over it briefly. As I point out in the memo, that 16-17 fiscal year-to-date activity is being compared to the, not the budget from 16-17, but the actual spend. So what percentage of salaries were spent by the second quarter of the total spend for the year, not what was budgeted? And then when we look at 17-18, you're taking what we spent through December of the 17-18 budget and comparing it to the budget. So you can track whether or not you're tracking to be on budget, or over budget, or about on budget. And so what I've done, and what will happen each quarter, is some sections will be highlighted that have a variation, and then I'll have notes, as I have here below, pointing out basically the source or the reason for that variation. And two of them are related to capital object purchases. So we've made purchases in our technology budget, computers and the like, ahead of schedule compared to last year. Last year, those purchases were made, for the most part, later in the year. So you can see those percentage of the total spend is much lower last year than they are this year as we've been able to make those purchases earlier. So there's some variation there, and that's the reason for them. And then I have for all the pieces here, explanations for each line of the budget as to why there's some variation this year when compared to last year. Are there any questions on the report itself or the information included?
Utilities are purchased services?
They are.
Take one slightly favorable relative to prior years?
Correct.
Take one relative purchase of less than. On the services, are those overages expected to continue to balance in the year?
They are. However, they're going to be balanced out because basically those, those costs are replacing costs that would have been coming out of personnel. Now you're not going to see that kind of percentage change in personnel because it's such a small portion of a very large budget.
So Topher mentions this is something that came out of the Finance Committee. We had lengthy discussion about just providing more information to the board. This is a first attempt at doing that in a quarterly way. If there's other information that you'd like, or we're looking for input on that, but it's just a way to share more information with the board and with the public in a quarterly way of where we are with our current budget.
Thanks, Topher.
Sure. Yes, so, and I'll have Topher walk us through this. This is a situation, though, that has been in the news with land being, possibly being annexed into the village from the town of Cedarburg. There's a, we've had a couple board members reach out to say, and even community members reach out, the whole board as well as myself, asking, you know, why don't we want that land to come into our district? There's a process to follow with that, and so I've asked Topher to research what that process is and to make sure the board is aware of what that is, and we're looking for some direction from the board to be able to move in that direction or not move in that direction.
Right. So we've got some steps, and with the Coalway Farm, the pending deal would be, it would be sold to a developer, and in order to be developed into a subdivision, it would have to be annexed into the village. But as we sort of referenced, that doesn't mean, just because it's annexed by the village of Grafton, doesn't mean it becomes part of the Grafton School District. It remains a part of the Cedarburg School District. There is a process by which you can attach a small territory or detach a small territory from one district and put it to another, add it to another. It would require approval by both school boards. It would also, so for example, we would need to approve that resolution, and then the Cedarburg School District would also have to approve the resolution to detach the territory from their district and attach it to ours. We would also need to invite the electors and the residents to a meeting so that they could have a chance to express their opinion and their thoughts on this matter to the board. And that would also have to happen if Cedarburg were to take up this resolution as well. So I presented, included information on the process in some of the forums, and we're, as an administration, looking for direction as to whether or not we'd be interested in pursuing this process.
Those are projected for that cell?
I do not have that information.
I'll look for that. Melanie Fieldus?
Single-family homes and duplexes, they're looking at about 190,000.
So, you know, we talked about this a little bit earlier in the week. There's no harm in this purpose when investigating this. It's just that it seems really unlikely that would be successful. What's for district in an era of declining enrollment is to attach potential students from their district. So I mean, we're likely, but it's pretty low. But there's no harm in trying unless it consumes, and learning a lot of times from sewer, if you're doing something that ends up probably not worth pursuing. So that's what we have to decide. We want to direct these administrators to go forward, at least go through this process because then we can honestly say we tried everything we could to expand our district, even though it's likely it's not going to happen. So that's what we have to decide.
And I believe the deal is somewhat predicated on it being a Cedarburg School District property. And so it's possible that we would invite people who might have to voice opposition to this process as well as it would endanger the potential deal.
But in the end, the process can't be adversarial. It's got to be mutual. So we can't go down the process and draft a resolution and Cedarburg on the other side say, sorry, we're not interested. It can't be adversarial. So to me, what would be the harm in reaching out, at least at the board level or the administration level to find out if interest in that, they're exploring referendum.
They are. It's true. I read, seems like I read things about them.
Does that impact their decision in any way? I don't know why we wouldn't be checking.
Unless students help them not have to further develop other things, yeah, we don't know. Seems like there's space issues as I read things, but yeah, it's a good question.
And in the end, this was run into the boundary of our last match?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, because one more, one more lot over, it is, it is Grafton School District. So if that land were to continue to be developed, moving to the east, then that is our district line.
It is also, you know, whether this development or future developments, leverage is applied to other community leaders.
Yeah, so right up here, in red is the Kelly Farm. And so that is Cedarburg School District, but over here is the Grafton School District.
And in the end, we're, we're always in competition with our neighbors. Our goal is to be, everybody is good and surpass them in terms of, it's alive. Well, it's, it was Grafton, but it's Cedarburg School District. That's what we're selling the estate of the year. Our goal is to change that. So we should be, we should be, I believe we should be reaching out to them, we should be talking to our own civic leaders to get their interest as well. And there's a lot going on. But because the process can't be adversarial, it's a matter of, is there any interest down there? If there is no interest, and they're not willing at all, like the Cedarburg School District discussed this, and make our progress, that's my, my.
I've heard a couple times of this development predicated on it being Cedarburg School District. Does that mean that this developer is not going to build this, this development if it gets put into our district?
We don't know that necessarily. We just, we know that that's kind of the purchase of the land is somewhat set on that. They would have to make a determination following that. I would imagine the owners, if they have a deal set up, might voice concern over that deal not happening for them. That's just something we have to be, I think, open for.
It's currently Cedarburg School District. The land is currently Cedarburg School District, town of Cedarburg. So they, they like the idea of the annexing because then they can have sewer and utilities coming that way. But that would be a change of the district, and that's what we don't know, how the developer would respond. That's not really our issue.
But who wants the idea of annexation from Cedarburg? The developer?
It appears the developer does, very much so. That's correct.
The annexation by the village of Grafton.
That's correct.
So it would equal like the residential base?
We can definitely, yeah, that's what we need. I mean, it's quite a process, and we're, we're good with doing the process. But, but you know, we could also reach out, I mean, maybe Kerry and I together can reach out. It's a board decision on our end, it's also a board decision on their end. So that's why we haven't really reached out to administration because it isn't really administration's decision to make that, yes or no. The board would be making that decision. We could obviously reach out to the board president in Cedarburg and have that discussion if the board would like that.
And we don't understand these ratios that have to match, are they a function of developed?
When you say the ratios that need to be met?
Well, 117.131, the assessed value of a territory proposed to be transferred divided by its assessment ratio, is that as it exists today, undeveloped, or is that as it exists?
My understanding is it would be as developed, as it's currently existing.
As it's currently existing, not as developed, which as it currently exists, this would be an issue for us.
Correct.
And as it's ultimately developed, it could be an issue.
Yes. That's, taking an established neighborhood is definitely a different.
And I guess, I don't know, the history, so how did, is it coy, or did it end up pieces that are already in, did that end up where it was? This, this, or suspected, look at the history of this law, this law exists, the statute exists for a long time.
Right, and it sort of does that with all of our communities because there's some town of Cedarburg that would be Grafton School District, there's some Sockville that would be in the Grafton, I mean, it's vice versa, I mean, depending on how it's laid out, what the history is, we wouldn't know that. But it is odd, and it happens. It is odd.
Is it odd because at the time the board didn't pursue, or maybe they did pursue, and that other board said, so we're not interested?
Right, I've seen that. I've seen that where an established community, neighborhood has asked to be moved into a different district, and the district that would be losing those families had said, no, that was established families. You already knew how many kids you'd be losing, you could, you know, use Google Maps, say, that's this many kids, that equals this. We're in declining enrollment. I've seen that where then you haven't had both parties agreeing. But to have it be new before it's even developed, and we don't know how long that would be, what's the build-out? How long would it take for a full build-out? You know, those are questions that aren't answered.
So from a tax point of view, it is, and it, they pay their property taxes to the village of Grafton, but we get, no, all the students are helping, well, not helping, but you would see increased enrollment in Cedarburg School.
And the village would pay a portion of those taxes to Cedarburg, like they do now. They have some parts of the Cedarburg School District, and so part of that, that tax income coming in is sent to Cedarburg School District presently.
So the village is going to, because my thought would be, this deal is probably a lot less likely to, be a lot less attractive if the village didn't annex it, right, because they want sewer.
Right, this kind of development wouldn't be possible unless it's annexed by the village.
It couldn't be annexed, I assume, because it's town of Cedarburg, it's probably not the village, or the city of Cedarburg is not able to annex that.
Well, I believe it has something to do with, with being bordered and where you are there, yeah.
Right, so it would almost seem, my guess would be that it, it's assumed it would be Cedarburg School District because it is, but the likelihood of the attractiveness or the viability maybe even of the whole project goes away if the Grafton doesn't annex that.
Correct, it would be, it would be different. I mean, that's, yeah.
If our relationship with the village is, maybe in an ideal world, we could work with the village and say, we don't, we want this. It's not happening if you don't annex it. So, because I can't, to your point here, I mean, why would the Cedarburg School District say, sure, go ahead? Not that that phone call shouldn't be made, but my guess is that's a really, really short phone call. I mean, I'm thinking if it was the other way around, you made key to us to, to, yeah, we'll discuss it.
Well, we need some direction, everyone, because we should at least have some preliminary discussion. Jeff and I can talk with Eric, or even with Dr. Bill, just to see what their thoughts are, just going to, to share his attention. There's no rush, right, Alex, or, and then in deadlines, we should do it right away. Not until we're, I have a plan.
Yeah, we've had, as I said, we've had community members reach out to us asking, we wanted to bring it in front of the board to have that discussion, let you know the work that we've done behind the scenes, but the next steps could be, so we'll.
Where are they at with the village actually annexing?
It's not annexed yet. So basically, I think they still have the deal going down. I'm not sure of when the date would be where the village would actually annex that.
Because it seemed like that would, that would, yeah. Once that happens, it seems like whatever odds we have, whatever season of the hour we go, it's small.
Right.
Okay, I mean.
Okay.
You have any questions about that? For the joint review board, remember to designate essential development. We talked about.
We talked about that before. They are convening the joint review board, and they're convening it fairly quickly, right?
Yep, they've asked for a date in March. We got an email on Friday, and then we got a follow-up response today that they're trying to get someone from the district to represent the district. And so we had it as an agenda item for the board to be able to either choose a member or designate administration, whatever the board would like, to be able to represent the district on this review board.
Can we discuss what that means at the last meeting? And so I ask people to just decide if they have interest. They did have one board member express interest, and I'm inclined to, with Jerry, I'm inclined to do a point, unless anyone else feels like, shoot, I missed a vote, I really want to do that, we can talk about, talk about that. But if anyone's got any objections, and happy to do that, if anyone's got other interest, I thought it.
And also, the joint review board proposes discussing the tiff associated with commercial development on the east side.
That's correct.
Which has some challenges. So I had my joint review on that, but I think, what is the interest of the board relative to that? It's just off the wire?
No, so it's, it's east of Juces, goes down there, and freeway, and it's farmland now. Right, yeah. A little north, north and east of Cothers.
We've never taken an official position, we have this in the past, or our unofficial position, we wouldn't stand in the way of this progress. But so let's put some thoughts on, like Jerry's arm to the dart, and just not on the table kind of opinion, we can talk about that.
Well, I'm not a huge fan of it, but living out in the town, it probably personally affects me if it becomes like industrial. It obviously is a high, I mean, right now, it's farmland, which is adding, it could eventually be residential, which in the town plan, obviously is more desirable for school district, because that's become a residential development, bringing in new families versus industrial, which doesn't bring in, I mean, new business is great for the village, it's not great for bringing in increased enrollment in the schools.
It's an interesting point. I don't know that this committee is not charged with that kind of decision making. And so it's a great point, I don't know if that comes into your discussion, because really, that committee can be just the answer to the but-for question, and I don't know that that factors in, but it's a good point.
But I think, I would say that it is valuable, like, that's some nice real deal out there. Like, but-for, I don't know if it does mean that no one would develop it unless given the tax and spend it, because a residential development does not need to be annexed into the village, because you can build it with all the other townhomes, you know, not needing sewer and the.
I mean, the but-for, for me, gets really difficult when the developers voted as saying this property is head and shoulders above the rest, then why do we tip? Or, I mean, that seems to be completely counterproductive, and tipping it. Or they just know that we're going to get it anyway, so they'll tell you, we absolutely love this property, it's perfect for what we need, and any other negotiation, you can pay for your own, or instead of.
Yeah, when I saw that as well, I thought the same thing.
How do you put that in?
Always a seven-shoulder, more, it's all the same. Develop it, yeah. The other side, it is, it's odd because it's so diametrically close to the Cothers. We've had all this significant commercial development in retail, the hospital, all very development for the village, and we continuously decline the room. So does this commercial development change that? Bring in light industry, and we're building new jobs that sustain, but it wasn't all the other development meant to do that. And you were talking about residential development that's 190 units, but we have to fight tooth and bane to ensure that we'll try to begin a process that will allow that to be within the district boundary. And here, the tiff is established, but commercial development historically hasn't gone to increase in development. It's a challenge, and that's maybe my perspective, to be hard-pressed to say that but-for.
Of course, that becomes a push-punch-to-shock discussion, and they feel we're walking away from the table, and that's all at risk. But I agree as a board that you can go into that meeting with both of those points, I mean, the valid points. Okay, we'll wait to hear when that meeting's.
So at our November board meeting, we had lengthy discussion about the idea of making, should we be making an exception for students looking ahead to, as we read district? What does that look like, and so forth? And so the board had settled on the idea of looking, of having a discussion about current fourth graders going into fifth grade. And because of the number of students that would be affected in that, that there's smaller numbers of students that may not be leaving with as many, or being, going to a building that would have as many friends that would be there. So for example, Kennedy, there would be two students going to Woodview. And so we had lengthy discussion about, well, does that look like, about class sizes? The board had then directed us to do a survey to parents. So we sent a survey to parents. There's 25 students that were affected by this. Six were assigned to Kennedy, 19 were affected that were assigned to Woodview. And at that point, I believe our numbers were 62 and 62 is what we were. So, you know, we said, well, if 19 kids were to say, I don't want to be at Woodview, I want to be at Kennedy, what would that do with class sizes? And we didn't know, so we did the survey. So Cara developed a survey, and then she sent out the email on 12/7, 12/22, and 1/8 to all of those families. We had a total of 14 responses out of the 25. Nine of the 14 said they were okay with their placement. Two requests were made to stay at Woodview, two requests were made to stay at Kennedy, and one was a request to go to Kennedy instead of Woodview. And so looking at that, we really, you have basically a difference of one in that way. The numbers have switched a little because we've had some different assignments with other, for other reasons, and people moving and so forth. So if we were to grant those five people, if the board were to grant for those five families that exception for that one year, so their kid, their child is going into fifth grade, it isn't for siblings, they would have to provide their own transportation, all those things that the board explained, we asked that in the survey, they had a check saying they knew that. It would bring our numbers to 64 at Kennedy and 60 at Woodview. So in a three-section school, you're at 20 at Woodview, you're at 21, 21, and 22. For the feeling of those families and their concerns with their kids and being able to end that elementary school at that school, our recommendation would be to accept that, but the board has asked us to look into it. Those are the data that we have. We did not hear from those other 11 families, but three attempts were made to get a response, and the majority of them were fine, they were okay with the placement, and five were not.
You said just 64 to 61?
It would. It'd now change, even since my update on Friday, it would change from 64 to 60.
I would say, I would say that, we should just go ahead and run through the nine-year that we're.
Yeah. I'd close the look at the other one, and send it up on the other side. The time for petition, the board for emergency relief has passed.
We will follow up with those other five families as well, I'm listing them as that, and.
Do you feel confident that we've discovered a number of other families that they know that they're, that they were contacted?
Yeah, we believe, I mean, you know, obviously, this was a hot topic in the community, it was spoken about with parent groups. I was reaching out three different times, both immediately after the board meeting, before break, after break, you know.
Emails or emails?
Those are emails, they're emails.
So what you sent out though is considered a survey, correct?
Yes, sir.
So it's something that had a formal document, or some kind of a formal document that would fill out to say, you took the survey, we're going to implement this, fill this out, send this, and then we're going to perceive it, for the five or for all of them?
Oh, for the five?
Because some people want to see survey, and they just maybe chose not to fill the survey out.
Yeah, well, we had a description. The description was pretty lengthy, but explicit on what, Carrie took the survey.
I don't know, yeah, so, yeah, it's mine.
She might have been the first one, actually.
And if this isn't a survey, this is our official request, asking for you.
For the board. The board has directed us to do this. We had a description that went with that, so that they would know this wasn't just a random survey, this is an opportunity to do that, to fill that information out.
What's the next point? For the five families who did decide to either stay, you know, to stay in Kennedy, to stay at Woodview, and the one that's supposed to go to Woodview, going to Kennedy, do we need them to sign something? Because part of that, on the email or that survey, said that you understand that we're not providing transportation to the, you know, to your school, and you would be on your own to get your child to, if you're staying at Woodview, we're not, you know, going to come get you and bus you to.
We can do that. I mean, I spoke with one of the parents today who had called saying, you know, do I need to come to the open session tonight and make a comment? And I said, well, you're obviously welcome to, here's the data that it is, I don't know what the board will do, but here's what the data is. And so that person understood the whole transportation piece, but we could do that, we could follow up with them and say, we'd like you to, whether it's electronic signature, whether it's a paper signature, but our goal would be to follow up with them with a letter saying the board has made the decision to approve the one-year exception that you've requested, and you will now be going to the school. We would allow, then we'd let the principals know for that.
Just so that there's a clear package for some reason, something changes in, and suddenly in September, it's like, what do you mean? You know, I thought I was getting this.
Sure. Yep, and we can include that in the letter and reiterate those pieces that would go with it. Okay? Okay, so we will move on that. So as we look ahead to the 18-19 school year, we want to be able to share with our families what our school year looks like next year. You know, this year is a unique year in that we started school earlier, we have had different times off than other districts in our area because of our construction schedule, we'll be ending early and so forth. So we started looking at this back in, gosh, probably November, as an administrative team, looking at what the school calendar could look like for the 18-19 school year. We've researched some other districts in our area across Southeastern Wisconsin. There's a push right now in CISA 1 to look at, trying to have schools all have the same spring break, and sort of have like a standardized spring break, so there'll be more information, you'll hear about that. We try locally to work together with Port, Cedarburg, Meckewan, Northern Ozaki, all the Ozaki County schools, we have a discussion about trying to keep our spring breaks similar in our area. But the push is to have something in the last week of March, no matter what, and then have something around Easter, whether it's that Good Friday and the Monday after, or whatever it may be. So there's some schools that are more west of us, Arrowhead, Kettlemore, Pewaki, that have looked at that, even some schools, as you had, South, Nicolay, Shorewood, and so forth, that have looked at that. Ozaki County, we've not looked at that, we haven't researched, we haven't looked into that, we've been looking at keeping a break similar to, around that traditional Easter timeline. So that's something, just as a background information for it. As we've started looking at this and researching what other districts were doing, we did come across two districts, both Kettlemore and Pewaki School District, and then the Elm Brook School District is moving to that, I just spoke with their superintendent at the convention last week, where they have elementary students start school later than their others, than the rest of their student bodies, and they call it Great Starts Conferences. And what they do is, they set aside 45 minutes for conferences for families and students to come in and have an individual meeting with each teacher. So I have 21 students, I have 25 students, whatever, however many students I have, instead of having my sneak peek the week before school starts, first day, kids come in, I sort of get going, and then I meet you at that sneak peek for two minutes, five minutes, whatever it may be, and then I see you at parent-teacher conferences. They don't have that sneak peek, they have where you're coming in for those couple days as school begins, and getting an opportunity to express your strengths to your child, some of your concerns you may have, the excitement you may have, as well as the teacher has an opportunity to do some testing, whether it's F and P testing, maybe about 15 minutes of that. And so it helps that teacher really get to know in depth that student and that family, as well as helps that student feel very comfortable moving into that different grade and that teacher. As we look at our year and the transition, you know, a lot of the concerns I hear are, as you move from three elementary schools to two elementary schools, are they really going to know my child? How are we transitioning? You know, and we've said that, just as we do now, we'll still be having teachers get together with principals and have discussions about who should be with who and who shouldn't be with who, and what their learning styles are, and all those pieces. We have time set aside to do that, but this would be an idea, as we were looking at things, this might be a good year for us to pilot something like that, whereby we would look to have the first three days of school, so that Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday be a time where we would have elementary students not start school till their, first day of school would be on that Friday, but to have a Great Starts Conference with their teacher. We do that currently now with our EC and 4K, where they come in and they do that, and it's been met with great success. One of the teachers that came from one of those districts had brought that with her when she came. On Friday, so that was our thought process, a concern that we had was, you know, when will teachers be able to move into their classrooms? When can they get their classrooms even ready? As we look at our construction schedule, you know, jumping ahead a little on the agenda, on Friday, we met with Hoffman for three hours to talk about, our entire administrative team, talking about what does the end of the year look like, what does the beginning of the year look like? Packing, moving, storage, all those pieces. When do we need to be out? When does abatement occur? All those different pieces. And for new spaces, they are saying that probably around the 20th of August is when we may be able to get into new spaces. For remodeled spaces, they are saying the 27th of August, which is a week before school begins, will be the first time the teachers will be able to get into their rooms. So you think of all of our teachers, but will, you know, will be impacted in a certain way. Science at the high school will be significantly impacted, other rooms won't be as impacted at the high school. The middle school will have some construction occurring over the summer, but it won't be anything major. The elementary schools, almost every room, meeting with Hoffman, is going to need to be packed up and either moved into a different part of that building, or moved into a semi storage unit for that. So starting on the 27th, there'll be an opportunity for them to be able to unpack all those boxes, get things on the wall, and get things ready for school to begin. So following that meeting, it really reaffirmed the idea that this is a great year to do a pilot. We have people that are concerned about making those connections with our teacher, being able to share in a face-to-face meeting before school even begins, the opportunity to do that. We met with, we have an elementary scheduling team that is currently meeting, I went and talked to them about that idea. There's teachers on that team, there's parents from each of the different schools that are on that team. Tofer and I met with union leadership, they shared it with their board, and really predominantly positive comments from both groups about that, about the idea of starting the year in a different way this year, that would help us with that. The back page sort of talks about the hours calculation. So it used to be numbers of days at secondary level and hours, and now it's just hours. And you can see that at the high school level, 1,137 hours are required, and at the middle school, 1,137 hours are required, but at the elementary school, 1,050 hours are required, 437 for 4K, because it's half-day, that would go with that. So even with us starting elementary later, there are still, we still have an excess of 85 hours for our elementary students. So we aren't at risk of not having enough instructional hours for our students. We see that idea of being the opportunity to get the year off to a great start, surpassing the loss of instructional days, because we believe that that will help us start the ground running with our students, helping them feel comfortable, helping staff feel comfortable, working with the staff. We talked about, if the board were to approve this, we would develop a calendar that would, for parents to sign up on, and we'd vary those hours. So maybe one day is, you know, eight to three, one day is 10 to five, and one day is 12 to seven. So there'd be, so we'd be able to, those stay-at-home parents, as well as a working parent, to be able to go ahead and do that. If those days don't work, the expectation would be that the teachers follow up and set up a time with those families to be able to do that. So that's probably the biggest idea that we're sort of looking at as a change in our schedule. We're doing, the high school last year had piloted, you know, in the past, they did ninth grade only for a whole day. grade only for a whole day, and they had 10th through 12th grade come the next day. With our construction schedule, we needed more instructional hours, so they piloted ninth grade only in the morning and everyone coming in that afternoon. They really liked that, so they're staying with that. The middle school still really enjoys the sixth grade only, a great transition time with only sixth graders. Their link crew.
Web crew.
Web crew, thank you. Web crew run some really great activities for kids. They're sticking with that, and then seventh and eighth graders would start on the fifth. So, that's probably one of the biggest differences with this calendar that we are looking at. Once again, we are starting our new teacher orientation on the 22nd and 23rd, so the Thursday, or the Wednesday and Thursday. This year, we use Canvas, which is our learning management system, to create some online stuff for new teachers, so acclimating them to our school system, as well as helping them see the benefits of an online system and doing that with possibly their students. Using it in that way, we'd still have our teacher professional development during those first four days. Obviously, you know, those, our PD will be affected by the fact that, you know, teachers are basically coming into their classroom on that 27th and school's starting on the 4th for a number of staff. For some, it'd be on the 5th, for some, it'll be on the 7th, but the amount of time it will take for them to be in their classrooms, it won't be a typical year of PD as we get ready for the beginning of school. And then we looked at, we used to have a day off in September. We moved that to the October day for professional development. So, on the right-hand side, so underneath each of the things in the calendar, it'll say, no school teacher professional development day. And on the right side, it'll give you the number of days that are set aside, whether it's in the trimester or whether it's in a quarter, as well as what exactly those days are for professional development, whether it's district, whether it's grading, whether it's building, whatever it may be there that would go with that. You can see November into first quarter, we, so we have the 9th as a professional development day. Thanksgiving break is the 21st to the 23rd. There's an early release for 5K through 8 as we finish the trimester there. And then we have no school on, winter break would start on the 24th. We'd come back to school on the 2nd of January. Semester would end on the 24th, so it'd be a PD on the 25th of January. February, there is a early release day for 5K through 8, and then professional development day on the 22nd. March would be parent-teacher conferences. You can see that the end of the third quarter, then end of the trimester on the 8th, end of the third quarter on the 12th. The 15th would be professional development, it'd be conferences in the morning, and then it'd be professional development and collaboration, and then vertical building PD that afternoon. Spring break would be leading up to Easter. Easter is on the 21st next year, so it'd be the 15th to the 19th. We have no school Memorial Day, and then we would be, the last student day would be on June 7th, and then teachers would come back on the 10th and the 11th. The 10th would be a building slash grading day, and the 11th would be professional development. Some questions?
I have a question on the hours. So, the goal is for next year with only two elementary schools, that all the schools will have the same, all elementary schools will have the same number of hours, correct? Because like this year, I just found out that Kennedy gets released earlier than the African elementary school and Woodford. So, in theory, they're getting two less minutes each day?
Released like on a normal day?
Yeah. What time does Kennedy get out? The 2:20 dismissal. Do we prepare though for dismissal with some busing and getting ready for the end of the day before the 2:20 bell rings at the 2:20 dismissal bell?
I've never heard, I'll be honest, I've not heard that.
Okay.
So, yes, our expectation would be that we have similar, the same, because we're basing our time off of that, that we're turning into DPI. It's not really a concern because we have so many extra instructional hours, but no one, yeah, no one's, we can look into that if you'd like, but no one's ever said that to me.
I think the idea of elementary schools is a great year to do it.
So, we've reached out to the Y. Michael's reached out to the Y for us to talk about being able to provide Y care because we do know that this will be for working families. This is a, more days that they may, and they may not even have an opportunity, if you have a high school kid who's been your babysitter, to be able to help out with that. So, we understand that, and that's when the one concern that both Kettle Moraine and Puywaki both said, you know, that that's the one drawback. Hopefully, by being able to communicate now for a September timeline, that would allow people to, I know we did that this year with ending school early, you know, is a concern also, but that's something that we're working with the Y to be able to provide care and to be able to have an option for parents that may need that option.
So, the January, it works well for the grading period. I know some parents had asked about the Martin Luther King Day, you know, like Martin Luther King Day is Monday, and then we get off on Friday following, like this year is before Martin Luther King Day, and then like next year will be the Friday after Martin Luther King Day, with some parents or other things, being able to celebrate Martin Luther King Day on that Monday. But it does probably notice like perfectly with their grading, it does give teachers kind of grades. So, is that the reason behind not giving the holiday on Martin Luther King Day?
What is MLK? I'm trying to look up what that is for 19, 21st. I mean, the days are such that we could bring it back. We could have the 18th be the final day of the semester, and the 21st could be a grading day. You would have no school. Teachers would still be here grading, but you could have, you could have no school on that day.
I, it's just a thought.
Well, it's solvable. No, it's not a bad thought. I mean, we're one of the few districts, there's like three of us in this area, that had school on that day because that was also, it looked like it was going to snow, so we had, as superintendent group, get together and just discuss, what does that look like, and with right way and so forth, and it ended up not being as inclement weather as it's supposed to be. But that is something that we could do, that, you know, the days are never matching up perfectly anyways for secondary. You know, it's 90 and 87, so just make second semester a couple of days longer, but it wouldn't be a, it's not a, it's not a major issue in that way.
Does that then carry over year after year after year? Is there ever a time where it would be a condition? Or is it, as opposed to the calendar, this year do it, this year, if not every year?
And I'm, I just noticed like this past year, we had off Friday, and then Martin Luther King Day was on Monday. So, in my head, I was thinking, I wonder why we didn't just go one more day and then take the holiday on the Monday. This past year, and now this year, upcoming year, the difference of four days. It's only because some parents have off, and I was thinking, okay, you have Monday off, and then your kids have like the Friday before or after you just had the day off. So, it's a challenge. It's always nice if the kids have the same day off you have. I understand the teachers still have to work regardless.
It was in February when President stays, we're on that Friday, but President stays on that Monday, and a lot of people have, parents. I think that's true.
But I do like the days up to be preferably right after, you know, trimester or quarter end, because that is the ideal time for teachers to do grading.
I was personally opposed to taking Monday, the 21st off after the championship, because convenience in our schedule have always been in favor of having Martin Luther King Day off. That's never got a lot of traction around here. Let's say we're one of the few that don't take it off, but I'd rather make the statement that I'm in the memory and it got a every year thing, but I would, I think would keep it if we did it if it was to that actual personal, like the wrong point. So, if we're going to have that discussion, I'd be in favor of having discussions with that being a part of our calendar.
To encourage our students to do a day of service, I mean, you know, maybe engage in that.
There's, yeah, I mean, well, I think there's two sides to that argument. It's like, one is, should we make a bigger push for our staff to do something that honors Martin Luther King that occurs during that day? Or do we say, well, we're going to expect that parents are going to do that, and some parents work, some parents don't, you know, whatever it may be, and the kids, you know, some will choose to do it, some won't. I mean, there's totally pluses and minuses to both. We don't want to be seen as not wanting to support that, his memory, the tradition that we want to continue to progress forward in. Why didn't we do it last year? Probably because, as you look at the calendar, there's a ton of different things to look at, and that's why we bring it to you to hear one more, you know, that's, no one asked that question last year. Terry did after, it was over, I remember that distinctly, having that discussion, and...
And at the end of the day, we're not, neither of you are making advocates for a holiday. We're just advocating for making an observation that the kids could be off that, Terry. It wouldn't be a holiday because teachers would still be...
Well, I guess we'd give the family, on your argument, we'd give the family the choice of what to do. And mine was, if we're already taking a, needing a day off right around that time every year, because it seems to be consistently, that's just how it works out because the trimester or the quarter, there's always something that ends right there, and we always have a day off, do it the week before or the...
Yeah. As long as school starts on the 4th, it's probably always going to be close. You know, if school starts earlier than the 4th, then that's probably where, then that's where it probably becomes a harder issue to say, that's when your semester break's going to be off. Or you say, yeah, we're going to take that day off, and we don't take a different day off, or kids come back on Monday. I mean, one of the things that we want to do is, we've heard loud and clear, people like getting out earlier in the summer, so one of the negotiables that we had as an administrative team was trying to get out on the 7th, have students be done by June 7th. But the more days you take off, at the high school, there's eight hours. Now, we haven't had a snow day, you know, in a while around here, maybe cold day years ago, but, you know, you don't want to have one day and then be having to make up time. We've talked about if we had a snow day, there are some things we could do with the late start and maybe even an exam schedule second semester that would gain us a couple hours pretty easily, so we wouldn't have to use a PD day or try and do something like that. That'd be superficial, but we, so we are, we're building in time so that if there's bad weather, it wouldn't cause us to be under our hours. But we did work backwards saying, okay, well, we got, once we got to that point, we're like, well, June 7th, but you could easily, in this calendar or any other, as long as we're starting school in September, it's probably going to be really close to semester. So, would you like us to make that change? As a board?
Is there a way to project forward the constructs of this schedule? That desire to get out roughly around that June 4th, June 7th, and an assumption that we start the day after, later day, and take a look at the next three or four years to determine, well, what is the impact on saying that that grading period in January is going to end the Friday before Martin Luther King Day? Just to make sure that at the end of the day, we're not shortchanging by number of days, one of the grading periods, you're making it extraordinarily long. Seeing you're being a robot.
Sure, totally.
Without having a great deal of detail or specificity on any other day.
Yeah, and, yeah.
So, rather we do it, plan for what's opposed to, well, this year it works, next year it doesn't work. Right. Okay, that's a good setup there.
Sure, maybe we can do that.
But if you're, if we're on a medical board meeting for a month, that we're delaying the calendar by a month, is that a question?
Well, only yes, yes, you're delaying it by a month. I mean, is that, is that the end of the world? I don't, I don't know. I don't, I, that'd be for you to decide whether that's, is this the pressing issue that everyone's asking about? I mean, I think people want to know, my understanding is that people want to know, are we starting school early? And that, you know, are we starting school late? Excuse me, not early. Are we starting school late? Seems to be people's concern, and we've had zero discussions with Hoffman. That is just a non-negotiable, that we're starting school on the 4th. So...
So, you could look into that.
Very easily.
As it relates to August 27th, the tight time comes for teachers to start the light of construction. You said that professional development, that it won't necessarily be typical, does that mean that there is more time dedicated for them to get the class ready?
That is exactly what it means. And I've expressed that. I expressed that to the union, didn't I?
And I think everybody has to appreciate, this is...
This is a unique year. This is a unique year. You know, will we still have our all-staff welcome back? Definitely. Will we still do that? Will we still recognize years of service? Will we still do celebrations together? Yes, we will. But it was a unique year this year in various areas, and we've built in time, you know, we have time built in for our calendar from now until the end of the year for opportunities like packing that is unusual. You don't usually think of professional development as packing your classroom, but we've set aside time in April for staff to be able to have time to do that. So, we're, you know, we want the board, as well as teachers, as well as our community and families, to know that we are aware of the things that occur, and although we want all students to be as successful as possible, and having teachers collaborate is one of the best ways to increase student achievement, we also realize there's also some nuts and bolts that need to occur that also help teachers be in a spot where they can collaborate, they can be successful in their classrooms that would go with that. And, you know, with Hoffman telling us on Friday, you know, that's something that we, that's helpful for us to know because in the past, you know, you're in your classroom, you come in over summer, that's going to be a totally different thing, different than it's ever been.
If we wanted to have the challenges with the, with Hoxton going to get in this year, when would have been the earliest we could have started classes this year?
The 4th. The 4th is the earliest you can start unless you have that waiver from DPI because you have a construction project or something like that, or you're a poor-performing school district. Those are really the main things as to why you can start earlier. You know, that's, the tourism sort of stopped, there was that big push, and we even wrote the letter in favor of allowing local control over schools. But that has been blocked, never even made it for a vote. So, the 4th is the earliest. And, you know, I think like with anything, with any new initiative, as I said to the teachers, you know, there's going to be something that we may or may not like about it, and so it's looking at, okay, looking in the future, what would be some minor tweaks? Or is this something that, hey, we tried it, it's great for this year because we really needed that? Is that something that we would want for our culture across the board? Yes or no? Get some feedback from families, get feedback from staff, making decisions that way. But we'd work with staff from now until then to be able to set that schedule and work it out that way. So, we'll come back in February. Any ideas? Or just looking at Martin Luther King Day, what does that progress out to? Okay.
Do you want some open enrollment seats?
Yes, so the memo that I've given to you talks about the number of seats that we had available for this year. So, we opened 97 seats, we enrolled 27. You can see the number of the different grade levels that students came into our district, as well as the tuition waivers. And then on the second page, you will notice that we have, for our total number of students from in our district, that come into our district, we have 173 students, and then it shows where each district those students come from, and then as well, our residents that attend out of the district to other public schools, whether it's brick and mortar or whether it's virtual, and you can see there are 95 there. It shows our open enrollment history, and we can see the total both of open enrollment in, as well as open enrollment out that goes with that. Topher has given us the monetary impact of open enrollment for us, so it's, they're currently estimating that this year it'll be $7,055 for regular ed students and $12,207 for special ed. So, open enrollment is expected to generate 1.358 million in revenue, while open enrollment out is expected to cost the district 743,000. So, it's a net increase of $614,000 of revenue that comes into our district through open enrollment. So, as we look at our open enrollment seats for 18-19 and look at, as we move to three-section schools, we looked at what are some of those grade levels that have space available that would not, that if we were to accept open enrolled students at that number, would not require us to have A either high class sizes or B have to hire another teacher, which then causes you to not gain revenue, but would result otherwise in smaller class sizes. So, we have, we are recommending one kindergarten student, five first-grade students, three eighth-grade students. With our fifth-grade class being so small, we have 14 fifth-grade students. Looking at our middle school, we looked at working with Kevin, having six sections and trying to have 150 students that he...
and trying to have 150 students at each grade level, so it brings some stability to their, to their enrollment for scheduling and so forth, that there's eight spots available in sixth grade, 17 in sixth and eighth in, eighth, sixth and eighth, excuse me, sixth and eighth. And then at the high school, it's a smaller eighth grade coming in, and so we look at offering 11 seats in ninth grade, 10th and 11th, and 12th and 12th grade are class sizes, so there'd be zero in 10th grade, two in 11th, and zero in 12th. Mary Pat, our interim people, has looked at our caseloads for our special ed class, for our special ed caseloads, and we have no, our caseloads are above, where we currently are, we're above the state average, and so they're not, we don't have any room to accept special ed students, so we are not recommending to accept any special ed students at this time. And then, once, once a district can set one time when a family has to reapply to stay through the open enrollment system, and that for us is students from fifth to sixth grade, so we are anticipating those students to stay. They're not part of this opening up of 72 seats.
Questions? Do you have the motion to approve the recommendation?
We took subject of ministry to 72 seats.
For the discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both are passed. First reading of Board Goals of Decent Success in the Quarters.
Okay, everyone has a copy of the proposed, let's see, the State of Education Goals of Decent Success in the Quarters. Yeah, how committee consistently carries students and stuff, that five times throughout the California, and really, and to get this draft, we will call that this, in response to a board workshop that was conducted, regardless of goals and objectives, we're all part of this, this board. Just a couple of things to keep in mind, and we don't build through in detail time, to get this first through. Essentially, the board goes our overarching goals, adopted by the board and reaffirmed annually, based upon what we, that's the concept, these are overarching goals in our meetings and our discussion, we look at surround the districts, we look at best practices throughout the state, where we, those overarching goals would remain subject to board affirmation on a basis. We believe that each of the goals should have some level of objectives that would change each year, based upon the maintenance of those overarching board goals, and that those overarching objectives and the goals, overall goals of the board would be used to inform the superintendent's goals and objectives, and the district's goals and objectives. And I think if you look at those overarching goals, there's nothing controversial in fact what we exist for. We think that the progress for the board objectives should be measured annually, that the executive committee of the board should get together sometime, maybe June timeframe, to review our progress relative to those objectives, and to report to the full board how we're doing. The goals may not change, but those objectives do, and how do we gain on those objectives that we've put out. And we also think that, as necessary throughout the school year, the district should raise stake in the discussion of the goals and the objectives each year, and to gather their thoughts for how we might go to, or what we might need to consider for future objectives. And that, a final report, how the board's done relative to those objectives that we presented, at a time that would coincide with the finalization of the superintendents. So if this is all coming together, we're fine for what we've got. So at this point, unless there's any questions, I think we should add a future agenda item to review this, and to consider some level of adoption by the end of this school, as to the next year's goal goals, as well as objectives. I might jump into this mid-year, more than halfway through, that would exist as a guide for school. Any questions? I think we should add a future agenda item in February, in March, and then get to a point where by the end of the school year, we're in a place to affirm these goals, and to either affirm, add, or amend these objectives for the next school.
Great.
I mean, I thought the process that we've done is actually very good, and as we go through, there are some that are in place, that we're able to do something like this, and we'll tie it all together. It will be something that we can conceive and understand as far as what are those goals, how do we measure those goals, and how we're trying to obviously put out on them, so, I thought we've done very good.
And it's not without its challenges. There's a lot that the administration plays right now, that we're talking about developing some level of survey, and some level of scorecard, I think you indicated in your roles, that's on the...
That will be done this year?
Right.
Yep, working on a parent survey, working on a staff survey, and, yep, so we'll have that for this spring, and be using it for everyone in that way.
So add it to the agenda and come to the board this year? All right, any questions for Paul or the committee members? Put it under the board for next year. Thanks, it's worked. Come on, it's a long, long time to come. Okay, some board policies, we didn't have policy...
Committee update.
Committee update on the agenda, so we're going to let's keep it on the board.
So we, we did meet on January 8th to go through some second readings that we had for some policies, as well as some first readings of policies. There were actually five of them that we had that were second readings, and then seven of them that are first readings, on how we are going to present to the board tonight for approval. There are also, under M1, 2, 3, and 4, there's actually, there's four that will be repealed, and then the balance of 12, that will be the new ones that we will add for the board.
So we can do these in two blocks. We can make the motion to repeal, and then we'll, we'll make the approval, unless any of them can, and second and third readings have any questions or further discussion or, because I think everybody's had an opinion, right? So if you had any checks or discussions, if anything else has come up, I'm further review, somebody wants to define that, what those go ahead and do right now, otherwise I'll ask for a motion to approve those that are slated for the QO. Motion to approve. For the discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and who passes, then with the motion to approve the policies listed in the board.
To revise passes, as reflected in the...
Questions for further discussion and laws?
I guess I have been through 34, 5, I think, just to make sure that we're reading those, there's a couple of things here, I think, but it's 34, 5, 345, 34, we...
Okay.
They have reference data first, read the data second. It's necessary to put that on the detail, for the policies approved, and we'll revise, and we'll revise, and we'll revise.
Yeah, that, that was old practice, that we did that, so that was just in that. And this was one that, that we actually didn't look at specifically, but it was suggested in the policy that, that we needed to approve it. So it was more just formatting and correcting the, the references to the exhibits.
I'm just saying, in the future, if we move through, if we see that there's that explanatory data first, read the data second...
You want that?
Okay, we can do that. Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Anything else? All in favor of the approval? All in favor say aye. Finally, an open session of construction.
Yes, so as Jamie's coming up here, we, as I mentioned, we met with Hoffman for three hours, and we have another meeting scheduled in March to continue the discussion, but we came up with some, some good guidance. I'll be sending an email out to all of our staff with some of the information that we gleaned from that day. And I guess the condensed version is that, as school gets out, we have a week to clean out Kennedy and Woodview, and then those buildings will be closed, and abatement will occur, so they can start remodeling those spaces. GES will have an extra week to, and then that will be closed, and abatement will occur there. The high school, they'll have access to the main office, and because of strength and conditioning that we need for the weight room, for our summer school, and for some of our athletic teams, they will be creating a path for kids to be able to get into the weight room, but otherwise, the majority of the high school will also be off limits as they seal that and get ready for abatement to occur as well. So we're looking into purchasing some boxes, packing boxes, we'll be, you know, reaching out to community members, families, students, looking for community service hours, our own staff, to be packing some things, and looking ahead to what that will look like. And, and that was sort of the, so we got some good, good legwork done on that, some more work to do before May, but we came up with some, some good work with that. As construction continues, before the meeting, we did a tour with the board, and you were able to see some of the things that have occurred at the high school, which is great to see, and those things continue at each of our sites, so, Jamie?
Yeah, so I just have a current update. So currently, we have three change orders. It's the same amount at each school, so Kennedy, $3,240, Woodview, $3,240, and the high school also. And that's pertaining to a load calculation that's changed, and this is going to metro welding, so they needed to reinforce the roof choices on each gymnasium. That is the current change orders that we have.
So as we discussed with the board, if there's anything under $25,000 that we would, in order to keep the projects moving, that we would approve those, but bring them to the board, so you're aware of change orders that have come along, and if it's over $25,000, then we'd reach out so that you would know what that is before moving forward, but those are the, so we'll start adding that to our construction update if we have any change orders that come along. Questions?
Questions for Jamie?
No, sir.
Okay, going to look for motion to convene a closed session to consider employment promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data, in this phase, over which the board has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. I think to consider performance evaluation data as superintendent, over which the board has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, and preconduct business contract negotiations if it's competitive, for housing reasons, require a closed session, this is in accordance with the state statutes, 1851 CNE, we have that question.
So, second.
Gary, are you voting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.